Committee on Public Works will now come to order. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Counselor Dion?
Here.
Counselor Pelletier?
Here.
Chairman Kadim?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings and transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. First item on the agenda is citizen input. Do we have any?
I did not receive any.
Okay. Anybody here saying none? Item number two is a request for a street opening in pavement less than five years old at the address of 522 Buffington Street. This item was referred February 19th, I'm sorry, August 11th, 2020. Is there any discussion?
Well, anybody here to answer the questions besides?
Mr. Perry?
I guess we've got an applicant, plus we've got John Perry. Who are you looking for? Administration?
Both of them.
Both of them.
I say that right?
Yeah, both of them.
Both of them.
Both of them.
I would never correct you.
Well, hey. Counselors, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Yep, Jameson Souza, 2290 Riverside Ave, Somerset, Mass.
Motion to waive the rules. Motion was made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Motion carries.
John Perry, Director of Community Maintenance.
Perfect. Counselor Pelletier, you've got the floor.
What's the story up there, 523? We all know the rules and regulations. Is that a new house going in or something?
Counselor Pelletier, yes it is. I have here just the history of when everything is granted, if I could. Mr. Chair?
You got one for the click? Need one for the click.
Absolutely. She can have a cop in mind when I'm done. I'll give it to you.
Fine.
I apologize. So, I purchased the property in 2016, early 2016. I got a variance granted in November 17, 2016. Had the plan, site plan, June 7, 2017. I got the building permit, November 17 of 2017. And for all three properties on that, what I did was I subdivided, it was a really rundown area on the corner of York and Buffington. And we cleared that lot. We've already built two houses. I've already built two houses on York Street. Single-family homes want to do a third one. We had a permit already pulled, but I let it lapse because we were building the first two, and winter hit, and I just let it go. During that time, there was an overlay put onto Buffington. So, what we're looking for is now, just to go back, we have that five-year moratorium that I have to come in here for the city council approval, to then just finish the project.
So, actually, the only reason why you're here is because they overlaid the street?
They overlaid the street. I wasn't aware they were overlaying it. I mean, it was, you know, just something, you know, just misinformation. It was just never received by me, but that's okay.
Did the building department, when you got the variance, tell you that this was gonna happen?
No.
Nothing?
No.
So, it happened after the fact?
It happened after the fact, after I got the variance and after I had the permit originally. But that permit did lapse, so now I have to go for another permit, which I'm fine to do.
You're gonna go for another permit now?
Yeah, it's sitting with Mr. Hathaway right now. This is just the last piece of it. To get a move on.
You're getting off him a building permit? Is that what you're getting now?
What's that?
A building permit off him?
Yeah, I'm waiting for the building permit. Cannot get the building permit because engineering, who's not signing off, or planning, I should say, is not signing off until city council. I come in front of city council for the approval of cutting the street open and putting the patch back down. Like I said, there's only an overlay on Buffington. I know, you know, Mr. Perry could talk about it. It wasn't a full repavement of that street. So, it's just, you know, I don't know what the layer is on that.
Yeah.
To Mr. Perry?
Yes, sir.
On the second sheet here, we got number one, two, three, four, and five.
Correct.
The trench repaired. It seemed to be pretty well in order. Is this what you, you ask them to do, or is this normal?
This is, those are the standard procedures whenever there's a street opening, especially when it's a five-year street. We make sure that these are followed. So, it's right in keeping with all of our other standards for repairs. The trench work needs to be done by a licensed drain layer. Flowable fill will be used, same in keeping with when we put down any kind of trench work, when you fill it. The asphalt patch, the big thing, this is something we changed when we sat here with the gas company a few years ago. It's three services, water, gas, sewer. All three trenches need to be encompassed into one patch. So, you won't have three patches on the street. You'll have one nice patch that's repaired, and they also have to be infrareded. So, an infrared is a stronger patch that holds together much better with the existing roadway.
Now, you got three patches. They're one after another, or side by side, or?
They're usually in close proximity. Depend where they tie into the existing line, but they're usually in close proximity. I mean, not right side by side, but that patch will encompass those three. So, you won't see three patches. You'll see one.
Are you going curb to curb?
No, it's just from the curb out to where the tie-in is, that will be infrared, and the width of where the pad, where those are. It'll only go to the line in the center of the road, so there would be really no reason to go across, I don't think.
If I could just interrupt, I would agree with Counselor Pelletier. I mean, Buffington Street's not that wide to begin with, right? So, I mean, if we're looking for support, I'd want to see curb to curb, especially, I know it's just an overlay. I know it's a little bit more costly, but, you know, at the end of the day, I think it's just kind of protecting our infrastructure. So, I'd rather see it complete. And then you have the seam going the entire length of the way, so it doesn't create any other additional issues with the infrared.
Okay.
Well, John, you know how I feel about the seams in the streets.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if you go curb to curb, that's two seams as opposed to four, so I can completely understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, well, you know, we're going along with this. We like to do it right, you know, and, you know, you've got money invested in there, and so does the city and the street, and we like to keep it fairly good. So, I mean, it's not a big thing, I don't think, but it's something that we'd like to see.
Yeah.
And I think it should be done.
So, can I just ask a question? So, is that something, I think, maybe going forward, if it's a five-year street and we're looking for a street opening, is that something you'll look for us to add, item number six, maybe, to this layout, as far as that?
I would like to see it. I'll look at it, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I don't know how my colleagues feel. You know, it's a little more money if they know upfront. You're gonna cut it three places. You go, gotta go curb to curb. So, if they're, if they're pricing the house, they're gonna make sure they're going curb to curb. You do the job right. You need sidewalks there? You got sidewalks?
The sidewalk is on the other side of Buffington, I believe, on that side.
So, you're getting those sidewalks on your side?
Oh, you do. Both sides, yep.
Both sides?
It's my old stomping ground. He filled it in a vacant pool.
Yes, yeah, there was a vacant pool.
That's been vacant for over 30 years.
I must say, there was a lot of drug use being on that corner. I know the neighbors have come to me repeatedly thanking me for, you know, fixing that corner up. It was vacant for many, many years.
All right, just finishing, I'd like to say, I brought the sidewalk up. It's a lot of times they put a new house, and they don't put the sidewalks in, in the curbs. And that's another thing, I think, because after that, build the house, and then they're looking for us, and then I gotta chase you down, see if I can get it done. And it's a tough job to get them, the city to do, we ain't got the money. But if it's in the package, they need a sidewalk, they ought to put it in. So, we can work on that, I think, as well. With that idea, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dion?
Now, the fact that it's just an overlay, is it correct to say that eventually there's gonna be a top coat put on there, that it's gonna be finished, or what happens?
No, it's finished coat. It's just a mill and overlay, is what we call. So, you go in and you grind up the old existing roadway down to a certain level, and then you lay fresh top mix on that. So, it's a mill and overlay. So, it's a more cost-effective way to take care of a street that isn't in terrible disrepair. Some streets require us to completely do complete road reconstruction. Certain streets don't. So, we try to save some money and stretch our buck a little bit that way.
Okay. So, I would agree also, though, the curb to curb is definitely much more agreeable.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Do...
Counselor Pelletier?
Do we need to send the building department a little notation saying that we agree that this should be done and will be done? Maybe it'll help them get the permit a little faster.
So, my recommendation was, would be that whoever makes the motion, that the motion include approval with curb to curb, repair on the road with infrared, patch, and then also subsequent, send a request to the building department or planning. Who's this come from? Planning? So, the planning to add as another requirement that curb to curb be done on any future work, and if it's gotta be included in ordinance, that it come back down before us, so that we can submit it through the ordinance committee.
You wanna repeat everything I said? I mean?
Colleen, did you get that?
Oh, you got it.
Working on it.
What's the timeframe on this?
You know, we wanna start as soon as possible, you know, before the winter hits. You know, we actually submitted this in March, but COVID hit, we understand, so it's kind of been just sitting there. And so, we wanna just try to get this finished, this project.
Right, 'cause there is a such thing as it getting too cold to put pavement down or to do a patch, correct?
Yeah, we're quite a ways from that. Plants are open really right through to January, at least.
Okay, so this should be able to be completed within that timeframe?
Yeah, absolutely. And if we can't do it, then we wouldn't start the project until, you know, until the frost actually comes back, until the asphalt plant opens up again. Usually, it's beginning of December. It all depends on the weather.
Yeah.
But end of November, beginning of December is, that's when the plant closes. If we see that we can't get it done by that time, then, yeah, we can't do it. We're not gonna just have an open street. It's not allowed to begin with, by the city. They wouldn't allow us to open it.
Right. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, so there was a motion made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Dion, that the road opening permit be issued with the condition that the repair be done curb to curb with infrared, as required by city ordinances, and that we also refer to, forward over to the planner, to add a sixth condition to all future road opening permits that would require future road openings to go curb to curb. And if any changes in ordinance are required, that it be referred back down to the city council to deal with that item. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Just point of information, does this have to go now and for the full council vote?
Tonight.
Tonight, it is there. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Much appreciated.
Item number three is the Department of Environmental Protection regarding issuance of Chapter 91 Waterway License Number 14859. This was referred on February 19, 2019. This item, we've got the Director of Water and Sewer here, and we also have the Hubber Master. Earlier today, we did receive an email from the planner who was not able to attend. Hopefully, you folks were able to review this. Essentially, this was submitted to the city council just as a correspondence, talking about that the actual permits were issued for the work that Mass DOT was gonna do for South Coast Rail. Not quite sure why it was actually referred to Public Works in transportation, but again, I think it was really just a matter of housekeeping and just keeping the letter on file that the proper applications were required. We do have, as I mentioned, the two department heads here, if there are any specific questions to this item.
Well, that's a little bit overview to come down.
Gentlemen, both wanna come down?
Good evening, counselors. Chair?
How are you?
Good.
You wanna just give us a quick overview? Think I highlighted it a little bit, but...
Yeah, so the issuance of the Chapter 91 Waterways Permit is issued by DEP. It's for when there's any work that's involved with the navigable water or a once navigable water that could be considered navigable. With the layover station that's being constructed by Mass DOT Railways down at the old Saint Vincent's property and the Weaver's Cove property off of North Main Street, there was an area there that was once filled or is being filled as, and it's a filed title lands. So, in other words, there's a couple of streams that come down through there and then go out into the Totten River. The Totten River tidally would back up into this area at one point. That's what kind of triggered the issuance of this permit. It's not really navigable water.
It's not. Those, I spoke to the engineer from DEP, and there's a very fine thread of a stream that it's non-flowing. It hasn't flowed for years, and it's on the, if you look at the locust, it's on the west side. But the permit, the scope of the permit is only allowing them to put more fill on already filled tidallands. So, it's not gonna have any effect on the Totten River, either commercial or recreational boating. So, this permit is only allowing them to put additional fill over already filled tidallands. And as Paul said, the only thing that triggered it is that very, very small stream that used to flow into this property. It's non-flowing anymore, but because the public still has property rights and it's held in, you know, trust by DEP, those property rights are protected by DEP, so they felt it was necessary to file this permit.
Just a question. And I know it really doesn't pertain to, or will impact the vote here, but was that relocated, the stream, or is it just not?
It's filled. It was filled originally when the other land was filled. The stream was filled also.
Yeah, all right.
It is filled. Through this property, there is drainage that runs through there from the, from the old streams that come down through this area. It is piped now.
All right, perfect. Counselor Pelletier?
How many yards of dirt are you using, or fill?
The, I'm not sure that the permit particularly states that.
Is it a big job?
It's not us, it's the, for the state.
State?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all the state that's doing the work. It's DOT Railways. It's their project. It's under the, it's part of the South Coast Rail project. I'm not...
22,000 cubic yards. Yeah, so if it's, so if you look at the fourth page of the documents that we have for agenda item number three.
Yeah.
Last paragraph.
All right, it's a lot of dirt and a lot of gravel, I guess.
Any further discussion?
Well, it's already been approved by the Department of Environmental Protection, so it's in compliance with their requirements.
So, the intent from my standpoint was really trying to clean this matter up. I was just sitting in committee. Before doing that, I just wanted to make sure we had the department heads here, just in case we had any questions. So, if there are no further discussions, motion granted, leave to withdraw.
I'll make the motion, grant to leave to withdraw.
Motion was made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you. I think you should stay for the next one now. Item number four is a resolution regarding flooding issues at 50 Anderson Street. Item was tabled on January 29, 2018. So, can you just bring us up to speed, Mr. Furlan?
Yes, so this was...
Make a motion to lift.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to lift from the table?
Say it.
Motion was made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Motion carries. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for keeping me honest.
So, this was tabled, as the chair said, back in 2018. This was a, this was based off of a request by the council to submit, to make improvements through the Suckerbrook area, down off of Dickinson Street and Anderson Street. Mr. Barlow, who lives at 50 Anderson Street, has been affected by flooding for years. 2010, I believe, was the worst year that the flooding occurred, which it occurred in many areas throughout the city, back when we had big floods in 2010 and 2012. Within the packet that was provided to you was a loan authorization that was requested to be submitted by the council. So, Mr. Sullivan and myself, back in 2018, put together the loan authorization in the amount of $3.2 million to go and start some work out in that area. So, there's multiple things that play into the, into the drainage out in that area. If you give me a second, I'll grab mine. Sorry, I'm not fancy enough to get up on TVs yet, so...
That's all right. I can see that better anyways.
Okay. So, just for reference, we have South Wattuppa Pond is over here. This is the New Atlantis Charter School, so the new school here, their football stadium, Route 24. This is Jefferson Street, where it crosses and comes down into the Dave's Beach area and the mill complex. Over in this area, this is Stafford Road, where it crosses Route 24. So, Suckerbrook is a stream that starts up on Stafford Pond. Stafford Pond, the city of Fall River owns the water rights to it. It's in the town of Tivitan in Rhode Island, but the stream from Stafford Pond comes and runs all the way down through some property that we own and other property, actually around the back of the new casino that's in Tivitan, comes down, crosses underneath William S. Canning Boulevard, and follows this pathway right here. Once it gets into this area, which is just, this is Dickinson Street over here, this is Anderson Street, right over in this area, and Dupree Street right here. Once it gets into this area, this area is very flat. So, you have a pretty channelized stream that runs through this area. Once you get in here, the water starts to slow down. It's a very wet area, very marshy area. All the blue that you see on here is either a channelized stream or a wetland identified area. This big one here is actually a mill pond, and that's the South Wattuppa Pond. So, this area is pretty flat. The outlet, you can see a small channelized area that comes through here. The outlet for all of this area to be able to drain, this swampy area and the mill pond, is for it to come right down through here. It passes underneath these mills, comes out right next to where our south end pump station is on Jefferson Street, travels all the way down by the old Dave's Beach area, crosses underneath the new roadway that was built for access to the Atlantis Charter School and the mill complex, and there's empties out into South Wattuppa Pond. One of the areas, one of the issues that we have when it gets into this area, so the water's coming down the channel pretty good, and then it gets into this area and just flattens out. There's an issue where this channelized area here has some backups, some buildup and some growth, but it's really isolated and very tough to get into that area, as well as down here, the outlet down here. And it's tough, because these areas to, to open this right up, then essentially you'd be draining, or you could potentially be draining a wetland. So, there is an ecological value to be, to keeping these areas as they are. The other issue that we do have, the other flow that does come into this big area, comes all the way up here. So, you have Dickinson Street, Spencer Street, then you get into the cemetery, Hancock Street, Wood Street, and all the way up. So, all that actually has a stream that comes, runs all the way down, collects all the drainage from that area. There's a stream that runs right through the middle of the cemetery, comes down, crosses Dickinson Street, and empties out into here. Eventually, all that way makes its, all that water makes its way through the wetlands, down and out, and through the mill complex.
And we just, we just did some work over there, right, for the building of the school?
Right. So, Atlantis Charter School, right in this section here, when they were doing their road construction, when they were doing the construction of their school, one of the requirements that we made them do was to raise this roadway.
Because it was always flooding over there.
Yep, this was always flooding because it was too low. So, we raised the roadway. We had them design and put in the proper-sized culverts underneath the roadway, and that was all part of Atlantis Charter School, building their school over here. So, this particular area has been improved. These areas, they were all identified in our 2005 integrated plan. So, Dickinson Street raising up, that was identified. Spencer Street would need to be raised up. The culverts that run underneath Spencer Street needs to be replaced. And then further up, further up into Wood Street, Hancock Street, all those culverts need improvement as well.
So, can I ask you just a question?
Yep.
So, before we go too far. So, the work on Spencer Street and all the other streets moving north have not been done yet?
Correct.
So, what's the, I guess, if we had concerns about flooding before, and those are gonna be on the docket in the future, with the new culverts and the flow of water, are we concerned that there's gonna be more, the flow of water's gonna be increased going into this than creating additional flooding in the areas that, you know, Anderson Street and potentially Dickinson?
Nope, without a doubt. That's definitely one of the concerns. So, that's why addressing these areas, you can't really address these areas without addressing the outfall to those areas.
Should've let you finish, sorry.
Nope, that's fine. You know, and again, that's what was built in this authorization. One of the first things that we need to do is kind of build a full hydraulic study of this whole entire area. You know, we need to figure out what the issues are, where the restrictions are, where we could, you know, lower some of the water, where we could bring stuff up, where we won't impact the environment, where if we bring it too low, we definitely could impact the ecological system that's out there. So, you know, that's one thing that we would have to look at to begin with. I would expect, so this area running through here is a fairly nice, channelized, clear area. Under the mills, that is a, it's a culvert that's enclosed, that runs underneath all the buildings.
So, can I ask you, just not to complicate matters even worse, so the, the stream or the raceway that's going through all those mills, I would assume that was used to dump some at one point, right? Dump some of their dye or whatever. So, do we know about any contamination in that raceway there, or are we looking at that in the future? I know we're talking specifically about the flooding, but I'm just, I guess I'm just kind of concerned about that as well, if we're looking at studies.
Yeah, no, without a doubt. That's always something that we need to look at, is the sedimentation downstream, the sedimentation in the areas that we disrupt, you know?
Because eventually, the south end flows into the north of Wattuppa, which is our drinking, right?
Well, it goes into South Wattuppa, and then South Wattuppa goes to Quikashan River up to the Totten River. So, it doesn't affect our drinking water supply.
It doesn't feed into the north when we, don't we raise the levels or something like that, no?
So, if we raise the level of North Wattuppa, it comes from Copacabana Reservoir. Not from, South Wattuppa hasn't been used to supplement the north Wattuppa since the 80s.
Okay.
But that is always a concern going into one of these projects. You know, we ran into that issue when we just, when we breached Rattlesnake Brook Dam up in Free Town. We got out there, out on the site. We did all the preliminary studies out in the, you know, in the channel, downstream, out in the tidal area with all the sediments. Once we got in onto the project site, then we found contamination on the site, and we had to deal with the contamination that was on that site. So, again, this was a heavily industrialized area. You never know what you're getting into once you get into those areas. So, between the culverts that run through here, this was a mill pond which had flow, which I'm sure came out here. You know, you look back at the 1800s layouts of this area, and I'm sure there was more mills and more industry in this area that's now gone that used to flow into these, so.
Okay, so you're looking, long story short, you're looking to do the hydraulic study? We've got that planned?
Yep.
Is that currently underway?
No, so we don't have the thing currently underway. There's nothing that's, we don't have a budget, any current projects or authorizations for that. Again, that's why we, that's why we came to the council with the authorization back in 2018. I'm always in contact...
Was that, did you say that was approved, or that was?
No, that's, that's what's in front of, in front of this committee.
For?
For either approval or leave to withdraw or...
Oh, so the actual approval of the authorization sitting in here?
Yes, the authorization is.
Understood, okay.
Correct.
And so, what, so you would do the, the authorization would include a hydraulic study?
Yep. So, it includes, so we have 200,000 for a study, then we would get into design of construction projects, then we have about 2.5 million for construction projects. Is that gonna take care of all the way up to Stafford or Spencer Street? That was just kind of to take care of this area, to get this drained out. Again, you know...
And the assumption would be, once you work on... And the assumption would be, once you work on that, you'd hopefully alleviate some of the flooding with the Anderson Dickinson Street area?
Correct. You know, you'd essentially, you'd start to lower some of the water over in this area and come out.
Get it flowing better.
Right, get it flowing better through there. Again, Mr. Barlow, he's a 50 Anderson Street here, and he is, and he is here tonight too as well. You know, I'm always in discussions with him. You know, one of the issues that he definitely has there too, it's a dead-end street. The water does come and run down the street. In the winter, snow plows come down the street, pile the snow up at the end of the street. One thing that we're going to do is make sure that that's one of our trouble areas, the Water and Sewer Department to check after a snowstorm, make sure that it's open, because the water essentially runs right down the street, right by his house, and then out into this wetland area. So that's, that's why. Back in 2010, when Southwood Tupper Pond was 30 inches above full pond, Stafford Pond was 24 inches above full pond, a lot of water was coming through here, a lot of water was coming down this way. The water from these areas creeped up, and Mr. Barlow had damage within his house. He wasn't the only one. There was many people in Stafford Pond in Fall River, Westport, that had, that had damage in their houses as well. So again, you know, it is, it is an area that does have an issue, that has been identified in our integrated plan. Currently, we don't have any funding to move forward with this project. The reason that the authorization was brought, was brought to the council was at the request of the council, so that we would be able to start to, start to work in this area.
Okay. So the total amount for the loan authorization that you were seeking, or I don't know if it was you in particular, but the department was seeking, was the 3.2 million?
Correct.
Is that still something that you'd be looking to do, or does it make more sense to break out the loan order into specific tasks, so maybe do the hydraulic study first, see what it comes back with, and then get a better understanding of what the project costs are? I mean, I know we had 3.2 million. This is, you know, 2018. I'm sure some construction costs have escalated and things of that nature, so.
Correct.
What would your recommendation be?
That would be my recommendation, that we may want to, may want to send this back to the department. I may want to sit down and take a look. You know, first, first thing that we would really want to look at is do a good conceptual study and a good hydraulic study. That'll give us an answer whether there's some, potentially some low-cost innovative things that we could do to help the issue. And again, keeping the cost lower than going out to do a full construction project through the whole entire watershed.
So can I also make a recommendation? And the only reason I bring up the whole potential hazardous material or contamination that's in there, you know, we could potentially utilize some brownfield grant money, either remediation or even just testing. So if we do the testing, maybe we can identify, especially if we're going to use the Southwood Tupper for potential, you know, water use drinking.
Yep.
Supply. It may very well be a very competitive, you know, grant application to submit, and we might be able to utilize some of that funding, plus some city funding to help improve some of the flow of that water coming in by just, even if you're dredging the, you know, some of those raceways or the streams that we're talking about, you know, and absorbing some of the cost there, so.
No, without a doubt, that definitely, you know, if, again, if you wanted to, if you wanted to keep the cost, you know, this is a large cost. This would be absorbed. You know, the cost for this loan authorization, we would apply for as our funding and costs over the long term, but this cost would be absorbed by the stormwater ratepayers. So as always, with an authorization that's approved and loans that follow after that authorization, the payback of those loans is by the ratepayers.
Any discussion? Counselor Pelletier?
So are there any types of grants or different funding that could be applied for besides the brown water in this case, brownfield, sorry?
Brownfields. There is always grants that we are looking at. You know, it is tough sometimes to get, to get grants that cover a particular flooding issue like this. We are now in MVP, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Community. We got that certification a couple of years ago, and we have applied for a couple of grants. Most recently, last week, we were just awarded a hundred thousand dollar grant to work with Somerset, and Swansea, to look at our regional water interconnects in between the different, different communities. So MVP would be one of the ones that I would definitely be looking at for this area. We also have hazard, we're also a hazard mitigation certified community, and that would be another one. They just came out with their flooding mitigation program grants, but as this, as there's not great losses to, to major industrial structures, sometimes making the cost-benefit analysis for those studies with, through the hazard mitigation program, it's tough to make those cost-benefit analysis work for a project like this. But it's always something that we're looking at with the CARS funding. There are different rules in place, so that's something that we're looking at. But we're always trying to get grants to fund these. You know, looking at a study for the hydrology of this, one of the other thoughts that I originally thought about too, and I don't know with COVID and how everything's happening now, but would potentially talk to you, Mass. Dartmouth, or one of the local colleges to potentially do something, to try to work them into, whether it be taking some of the sediment samples, or building a model or something like that, but I don't know how that's going to work with COVID now.
Now, is this a situation by any chance, like, I think it's Whitefield Street or whatever, where swales could, could help alleviate part of the problem, or is that just not even on the radar?
So swales or infiltration into this area, it's such a large area of moisture that's already wet, the groundwater table is already so high that infiltration would be tough to work in this area, especially at the bottom of Anderson Street and those particular areas where the flooding's happened. Because a lot of time when the high-impact flooding, that it was these wet areas that actually grew and went right into that area. So swales, you know, swales or infiltration galleries, underground infiltration galleries, is something that we're putting, that we're requiring through site plan review citywide. And that does help overall runoff. It does not only water quality benefit, but it also helps with infiltration and reduces the amount of water that has to be managed by our stormwater system, our hard infrastructure. So that always does benefit. There is actually some development that's going at the bottom of Nightingale and Robin Street, a couple of houses that were being constructed there. They, because of the groundwater table, their engineer and us determined that they wouldn't be able to do subsurface infiltration, but they are doing stormwater mitigation on those projects.
So essentially, this, if I'm reading this correctly, there's three problems. One is the fact that the water comes down the streets to the dead end. The other is that the water table rises to the point that the property floods, and the pond actually backs up onto the land. Is that correct?
Yeah, so these are, these are wet, marshy areas, swampy areas, and yeah, that's, that is. The other, the other thing, as I said, that does compound in the winter, and again, is the blockage. So the water typically runs down the street, runs out the end. If that's blocked by anything, snow or something like that, it does definitely compound the issue as well.
That I yield.
Alright. Counselor Pelletier?
Yeah, is this an emergency-type thing? I mean.
So this work, right now, I wouldn't say that it is an emergency. If we had, you know, if we had 36 inches of rain in 30 days, as we did in 2010, the emergency, the, you know, nature of that emergency would definitely increase, because these areas, as well as other ones throughout the city, may be heavily impacted. This year, we've had an extremely dry year. I'm sure if you walk out there, most of those areas are dry. But is it, is it an emergency, something that needs to be done right now? No, I think, again, I think, you know, if we took it slowly with the study of the area to see if there's any low-cost innovative things that we could do to, to benefit the whole entire area, that would be the best spot to start.
So you're talking 3.2?
3.2 million dollars was the overall project to do, to do preliminary design, hydraulic study, design and construction.
Now, we would borrow the money to do it, is that what we're doing?
Yes.
At 4%?
Whatever the going rate is, I know, talking to the treasurers, they're down at 3% and these construction projects would most likely be eligible for SRF funding, so their interest rate is at 2%.
Alright. How low do you think you can get this with all the different fundings and everything else that you got, grants or whatever you got to get? Do you know? Not for sure?
I'm not sure. Again, it'd be tough to say what funding agency would be looking.
It should be a 20-year note?
Any borrowing that we typically do on projects like this, 20 years, yes.
Now, stormwater rate would go up to $2.31 per quarter?
Per quarter, yes. Per ERU.
Per ERU.
Yes, equivalent residential unit. So that's what was, that's what the stormwater fee is based off of. It's either a one-to-eight family house is charged a base ERU. Once you get into above eight families or commercial or industrial property, one ERU is 2,800 square feet of impervious surface.
So why don't I make the suggestion that we refer this back to his department, let him just kind of revisit this and have him circle back on the project, because it seems like it hasn't really been looked at since 2018 anyways, right, since it's been in our committee, and just have him come back down to us with some recommendations, and then we can make a decision if we want to refer it back to full council. But at that point, I think we'd have an updated cost for the entire project in terms of a hydraulic study. And then you can probably get a better sense of some grant funding that we might be able to use, whether it's MVP, even, you know, if we can be creative with the brownfields grant, I mean, just, just talk with our rep at the EPA.
Yep, without a doubt.
And then, at that point, we can make a decision as to what the project looks like. It may be completely different, and there may be new technology out there that we can kind of implement, so.
I think you're absolutely right. Go back, see what you can grab somewhere here or there, because, you know, talk at 3.2 with everything that's going on, you know, it'd be much better if we get a few grants and bring it down a little bit. And even the percentage, you know, 4% is a lot. We've been borrowing money at 2, 1 and 1/2, but this is 4%. Talking a lot of money. But I go along with the chairman saying, take it back, study it, come back, let us know what's going on. If you can find some money, it'd be easier for us. But that I.
Correct. Thank you. Any further discussion?
I was gonna, I was gonna ask if we want to get any input from Mr. Barlow.
Mr. Barlow, do you want to speak on the matter?
Talking with Paul, I think maybe we should put this on a back burner, or maybe just leave to withdraw. Every time I contact him, he's been great, you know, he comes right out, will send somebody right out there, take care of it. It's, you know, I don't know if it's more than one property, if it's just my one property, but I can't see, you know, the city spending 3.2 million dollars for one property. I have plans right now. I mean, tomorrow I have a meeting tomorrow with Conservation to construct a garage at my house now, so I'm raising the garage up, so it's going to be eight inches higher, you know, prevent water coming in, close off the garage that's going under my house now, so that prevent water going into my property now, you know, especially when we have those snowstorms and they block it. One thing I asked, you know, Paul for, is maybe we can put a sign down there, maybe if it's a legal-looking sign, the plow drivers will see the sign saying, hey, it's a flood zone, we can't block this, you know. And it doesn't happen, I'm not running out there at 1, 2 o'clock in the morning and, you know, telling a guy, hey, you got to move it. I know all these guys have, you know, insurance and everything else like that, so if something happens, you know, I don't want to have to go, you know, get a lawyer to go after them to, you know, take it to court, and, you know, because they cause damage with water flooding and stuff like that. So I appreciate you bringing this back up again. So maybe put it on a back burner or leave to withdraw, I mean.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I appreciate that. I think we should, I think it's still worth the effort to just kind of revisit, see what you can come up with, because while it may not, his neighborhood on Anderson Street might be fine, I want to make sure that all the other residents are, are okay as well. And then, you know, we've got a large investment, and I say "we" meaning the city, not necessarily the city itself, but with the Atlantis Charter School, you've got some commercial property down there. If we're looking to have some more economic development, I just want to make sure that we're handling any concerns that we have. So even if it's at, at a minimum to get a hydraulic study, and we have that, and that's as far as we go, so in the near future, if we have to kind of refer back to it, it's there. So, and then, and then at that point, we can, we can bring it back up and then make a motion to grant to leave to withdraw if we feel that's adequate. So there's a motion to table and refer back to the Water Department, Water and Sewer Department, was made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Deon. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries.
Can we also make a motion for that idea about signage in terms of the snow plowing?
Can you, can you do that, or do you need a motion for it? Are we good?
I have it in my notes, and I will talk to DCM about getting something up.
Okay, great, thank you.
We will trust him to get the signage up, and I'm sure Mr. Barlow will make sure that it's, that it's up, so.
Yes, by number if it's not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Seeing no other business before us, there are motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion adjourned was made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Deon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Committee on Public Works Transportation is now adjourned.